Thank you, everybody, and welcome to all. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And if you don't mind, if we could please stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, you are always with us and beside us. Be with us this evening as we consider the fairs of our great city. Give us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the strength to act. Amen. And if I may ask for a moment of silence for all those who paid the ultimate sacrifice to keep our city and our country safe. And may we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, and universal liberty and justice.
Thank you all. Okay, at this point, may I ask for a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Thank you.
One second, please. The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you certify the closed session in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, a motion to approve the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of May 21st, 2024.
So moved.
Okay.
The vote is open. By a vote of 9 to 0, with Councilmember Berluci and Vice Mayor Wilson abstaining, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
And I abstained because I wasn't present for that meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael?
Same reason.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I have to change my vote to an abstention from the formal session from the last meeting since I stepped out.
Thank you, we will note that. So it'll be 8 to 0.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, you know, we get to honor those in our city who deserve to be honored and make our city so great. Our first resolution will be in recognition of Captain Harry McBrien. Harry, come on down. Feels like the price is right here, okay? And we're going to ask Worth Remick if he would be so kind to bestow the honor upon you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Captain McBrien. Before I read the resolution, which is very lengthy, by the way, I want to congratulate you on your career. You're still in uniform, and we see you're spinning, but you're not in service, per se, but getting ready to go into private life, so congratulations to you. A couple of words that describe you from my standpoint. I've met you when I was running for office in 2022, and you were appointed in 2021. You're caring, professional, well-liked, funny, community-focused, knowledgeable, and a great role model as a public safety professional. So this is a long resolution because you've accomplished a lot in your life.
Thank you.
Whereas in 1989, Harry enlisted in the Marine Corps Reserves upon completing and recruit training at Marine Corps Recruit Depot, Paris Island. He was assigned to Marine Air Control Squadron 24, Dam Neck, Virginia. And whereas in 1990, Harry attended Todd Water Community College until graduation in May 1992, receiving an associate degree of liberal arts. In August 1992, he transferred to Old Dominion University until graduation in 1994, receiving his Bachelor of Arts in Political Science. And whereas in January 1996, Harry attended the Virginia Beach Police Academy and graduated in June 1996. Upon graduation from the academy, he was assigned to the 4th Precinct where he worked as patrol officer and a community policing officer. And whereas in January, excuse me, in August 2001, Harry was transferred to professional development and training, serving as a department recruiter and academy instructor until June 2006. And whereas in August of 2002, Harry was activated and deployed with MACS-24 in support of Operation Southern Watch, Operation Iraqi Freedom, to Jordan, serving as senior art, excuse me, air director. And whereas in 2006, Harry was promoted to the rank of sergeant and was transferred to the 2nd Precinct. In September 2006, he was transferred to the 4th Precinct as a patrol sergeant. And whereas in December of 2006, he was activated and deployed as Operations Chief, 6th Provisional Security Company, Djibouti, Africa, in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. His collateral duty during this deployment was port security officer, responsible for security of all U.S. ships while in port of Djibouti. And whereas in May of 2009, Lieutenant McBrien was activated and deployed as Marine Air Control Group, 28th Detachment, FWD, Al Asad, Iraq, serving as Assistant Operations Officer and Senior Enlisted Advisor. Each time he was serving abroad, Harry worked with organizations to better communities in those countries, such as Flip Flops for Africa, which provided shoes to children. And whereas Harry served as a Crime Prevention Unit Supervisor before being promoted to lieutenant on October 1, 2012. As a precinct lieutenant, he served as chief commander at the 3rd Precinct. Harry then served as 2nd Precinct Special Events Coordinator from April 2013 to 2016. Harry was then assigned to Special Operations as the tactical commander of the SWAT team. He then served as the narcotics and vice lieutenant of Special Investigations for three years. Whereas, Harry was promoted to the rank of captain and transferred to take command of the 2nd Precinct on April 22, 2021. And this is a long paragraph. And whereas, Harry was responsible for focusing on three main areas. Under his supervision, violence at the oceanfront was drastically reduced by over 80% during a three-year period. This was achieved by working with internal and external stakeholders. He would conduct monthly bar meetings to bring everyone together to reduce crime and bad behavior, and held precinct musters in the field. The section area of focus was the quality of life along the 17th Street Corridor and SeaTac. He worked with city, state, and federal and private entities to reduce crime while focusing on quality of life issues in Atlantis, Friendship Village, Colony Trailer Park, and Trailer City. His actions to improve quality of life for children in these communities included coordinating Kona Ice Trucks to give out snow cones to children and adults, driving children on a charter bus to lights at the beach, touring the Old Dominion Campus Sports Facilities, attending LAU Monarchs basketball game, and to see the Navy's newest aircraft carrier, the USS Gerald R. Ford. Lastly, Harry worked to recognize issues and try to find solutions to form a centralized location for J-1 students, providing safe and adequate housing for seasonal workers. And whereas, Harry's military awards include a Meritorious Service Medal with a Gold Star in lieu of a second award, Joint Services Command Commendations Medal and Veteran of Foreign Wars Officer of the Year Award. While assigned to VBT, Virginia Beach Police Department, Harry also received 32 letters of accommodation, first, excuse me, five Class Act Awards, and two Service Medal Awards. And whereas, Harry and his wife serve as co-chairs of the Old Dominion Athletic Foundation Legacy Society, where they have helped raise over $4 million towards athletic scholarships through planned giving, estate giving. And whereas, last one. Whereas, on this day, we honor a public servant whose leadership and commitment to public safety has immensely benefited the city. As he steps into a new role as a great private citizen, he will always be respected and appreciated for going above and beyond the call of duty. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council hereby expresses its gratitude and appreciation to Harry McBrien for his outstanding service to our city, our police department, for over 28 years. Adopted by the City Council of Virginia Beach, 4th day of June 2024, we present this resolution duly signed by each member of the Virginia Beach City Council with a copy of the minutes of this meeting. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, City Council members, Councilman Remick, thank you so much for that. City Manager, thank you. Chief, thanks for entrusting me to promoting me to captain. Really appreciate it. It's been an honor serving this great city and this great country for over 35 years. It has been a little tough sometimes at home, but fortunately, my wife of over 30 years, almost 30 years, and then together for over 36, has been right by my side and helped me through all that, through countless deployments and all the missed weekends. So it is a great honor to have this proclamation. I appreciate you doing that and everybody taking the time, especially everybody that came out to be a part of this. I'll miss you, but I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. I'm still working on a few things, like the councilman said, J-1's, one of the projects I'd still like to work on, and we'll be talking to some folks about that. But again, it's a great honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you and all of your colleagues for making us the safe city that we are. Thank you, and God bless you. Okay, moving on. Proclamation for Virginia Beach's Police Department, first African-American female sergeant, and that would be Sergeant Tricia J. Shelton. And we're going to ask Councilmember Sabrina Wooton to do the honors.
I believe this proclamation is a little bit shorter. But Sergeant Shelton, in your guest, if you would like to make your way to the front, whomever you like, and as you're coming to the front, generally as practice, it is an opportunity to honor women during Women's History Month in March, as is a practice. And this year, we had the opportunity to honor women in public safety who have achieved great heights. And it just so happened to be that after the awards were given, you were, I saw that you were promoted, so I wanted to give honor to you as well.
Thank you.
And so with honor and pride, I read this proclamation for you. Whereas Sergeant Tricia J. Shelton, daughter of Rose Davis and mother of two children, Terrell Shelton and Yashia Shelton. And whereas in 2000 through 2007, Sergeant Shelton obtained her bachelor's degree in criminal justice at Virginia Wesleyan College. And whereas Sergeant Tricia took specialized trainings in DCJS, General Instructor, Crisis Intervention Team, Crime Science Officer, Radar and Breath Tech Certified, Advanced Interviewing and Interrogation, and Leadership in Police Organizations. And whereas Sergeant Shelton has served in uniform patrol at 4th Precinct, Patrol 2nd Precinct, Patrol Summer Beat, to the Detective Bureau, Missing Person, Domestic Violence, 1st Precinct Crimes and Special Victims Unit, Member Recruiting and Mentoring Team. And whereas in 2012, she survived a jet plane crash. It's a blessing. And whereas in 2015 through 2017, she has received one letter of appreciation and commendation and three Class Act Awards. And whereas in 2018, she was awarded by the Detective Bureau Excellence in Unit Citation as the lead detective, collectively worked with the team to investigate the Ashanti-Billy missing person case. And whereas Sergeant Shelton was promoted as Master Police Officer in 2017. And whereas on March 21st, 2024, the Virginia Beach Police Department proudly announced the promotion and swearing-in of the first black female sergeant, Tricia Shelton, as at the Virginia Beach Police, or excuse me, Virginia Beach City Hall, right here. And whereas Chief Nutigate remarked, "As we gather here this morning, we are not just celebrating a promotion, we are celebrating a breaking of barriers." Tricia is not only an exceptional officer, but also the first black female to achieve the rank of sergeant in our department's history, the very first in 61 years. Yes, deserving of applause. This milestone is not just a testament to her dedication and hard work, but also to the progress we are making as an organization, end quote. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Sergeant Tricia J. Shelton as the first African-American female sergeant in the Virginia Beach Police Department. In Virginia Beach, I call upon all citizens in our beloved Virginia Beach to join me in celebrating Sergeant Shelton's promotion, accomplishments, and dedication she has showed throughout her career in the Virginia Beach Police Department. And witness whereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause this official seal of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed the 4th day of June 2024. And I also have a commemorable 60-year anniversary medal for you that further commemorates your milestone of being named the first black sergeant in the Virginia Beach Police Department.
Thank you.
So I'll bring that to you.
You know, it's an honor to honor individuals. Please have a nice, say some words, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmember, Sabrina Wooton. I appreciate it because you hit me up on Facebook, on the social media, and you asked me about recognizing me for this. And I was like, what does the hell this mean, you know? And so I was very honored to receive this proclamation and recognition for breaking barriers, making history. So thank you, City Manager. Thank you. Chief Nutigate. I'm not going to go into my speech from last time, but you had me wondering. But I really do appreciate it, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to lead and be a leader amongst the officers with the police department. Also have my family to thank who showed up. Thank you, Mom, my grandsons, and my daughter. And also to a lot of the leadership team who have mentored me. They've been behind me since the beginning. So I really thank and appreciate them for keeping me encouraged and motivated. So I am just going to share a little bit about my, what I shared on my speech, because I've been told that it was an amazing speech, y'all. So I want to share just a little bit about what the promotion meant to me. So to me, it means me overcoming all the struggles and obstacles that get in the way as a woman in this profession. It means not giving up on your goals, especially when it's a goal that can have positive impact in the community and for the department. Again, I joined the police department a little older, but the challenge was there, and I don't back down from challenges. So I had to overcome a lot of things. I won't go into that story about my time in the academy, but I got through it. And 13 years later, I'm promoted. So for the department, it's significant for all female officers. With my continued journey within the department, I hope it will continue to inspire and motivate all female officers to achieve their goals. This is a moment to show that it is possible even for black female officers to be promoted when the work is put in. I say the all-female officer progress is being made, but we have to do the work, and we can't give up. For the city and the community, this is an untouchable milestone that can never be taken away. And I can also say that for the police department, it demonstrates the department's progress towards improving inclusion and diversity for the police department that serves and protects the community. So just in closing, I just want to thank everyone again. This is amazing. I'm just floored by everything that's happening. I didn't know this many people was going to be here today. But I do thank everybody, and this means a lot to me, and I look forward to the challenges that I'm facing, and I hope that I serve you all well.
Thank you. God bless you. You know, it's indeed great to honor individuals, but it's also great to honor individuals who become part of a group that does some incredible things. And at this point, I'm going to read a proclamation honoring the 48th anniversary of the chapter of Lambda Gamma Omega. And is Dr. Tanja Arlington-Meiffield here? And what do you think? Bring the whole group up? Come on up. Bring up whoever you'd like to. That would be great. You know, this is indeed an honor. If I can read this proclamation. Whereas on June 5, 1976, the Lambda Gamma Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was chartered by 19 professional women in the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas Lambda Gamma Omega was the first African-American Greek-letter organization to have a chapter in the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas for 48 years, Lambda Gamma Omega has served the citizens of Virginia Beach and the surrounding Hampton Roads area through various community service projects, workshops, tutorial programs, and health screenings. And whereas for 48 years, Lambda Gamma Omega has served the citizens of Virginia Beach via food drives, coke drives, book drives, and by providing academic scholarships. And whereas Lambda Gamma Omega continued its service to the citizens of Virginia Beach during the COVID crisis and continues to do so today with its outstanding programming. Therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor, on behalf of this entire council of the city of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim the 48th anniversary of chapter charter in Virginia Beach, and I call upon all citizens to recognize the good work of this organization that benefits the cities of Virginia Beach on his 48th charter anniversary of June 5, and recognizes this day as Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Lambda Gamma Omega Day in the great city of Virginia Beach. Beach.
Wow, thank you. Thank you.
present, and to the members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Lambda Gamma Omega Chapter. On June 5th, 2024, we celebrate a rich history of achievements of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Lambda Gamma Omega Chapter. We honor the remarkable individuals who currently make up our sisterhood, and we acknowledge the diverse and extraordinary women of the past who came together with a common purpose and resolved to elevate our community in the great city of Virginia Beach. It is the strength, the compassion, the resilience of this chapter, those women over there, who have shaped the legacy that was set before us on January 15th, 1908, on the campus originally of Howard University. This is a special occasion for our chapter, and our dedication to uplifting the citizens of our city remains stronger than ever. Once again, thank you for acknowledging our chapter as we celebrate 48 years of sisterhood and service to all mankind. But I would be remiss to say that as the 14th president of this chapter, that I did it by myself. Present with me are Presidents Darnaghorns, Janice Johnson, Betty Penn, and I've got one more. Where's she at? Am I missing anyone? Not present with me is Marion Williams, who is a charter member that is still with us.
Wow.
And next year, we will have three members with 75 years of service to our organization. And many of our members, as you saw with me, have 50 years, 25, 30, and so on, and so on, and so on. So, once again, thank you for acknowledging us and celebrating 48 years of sisterhood. We take great pride in our achievements and contributions through our great city. Together with your help and continued support, we embrace the future with hope and determination as we continue to make a meaningful difference in the lives of others and in our city of Virginia Beach, Virginia. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your efforts, and thank you for continuing to make Virginia Beach the great city that it is. Thank you, and God bless you. Okay, moving on is a proclamation for LGBTQ Pride Month, and Mr. Berluci.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have the privilege to read this proclamation. And before I do, I would just like to say a few brief words, starting with that the fact that we're here, and I'm about to read this proclamation, is something that is powerful and that is meaningful. The fact that we're joined today by members of various community organizations, leaders, public servants from all across Virginia Beach and, in fact, the region, to join the reading of this proclamation is meaningful and is powerful. The fact that as a member of the LGBTQ community that I'm sitting in this chair and have the opportunity, elected twice by the people of our great city of Virginia Beach, and have the opportunity to read this proclamation, is powerful, and it's meaningful, and it's impactful. And Mayor, I want to compliment you and thank you. In 2019, the first full year that you served as mayor, you were the first mayor in the history of the City of Virginia Beach to officially declare June as LGBTQ Pride Month. You have made, you have made good on your promise to support each and every member of our Virginia Beach community by continuing to declare June as LGBTQ Pride Month. The first proclamation and each subsequent proclamation has been historic for our community. I know I'm joined by people in this room who probably couldn't imagine the fact that we would even have a proclamation like this read, let alone by a member of the council who is a member of the community. So I want to thank you. I want to thank the council, and I want to thank the community for being one that embraces and supports each and every member of our community, no matter who you are. I also want to just acknowledge that the fact that those of us who are here, part of the community and allies, we stand on the shoulders and we stand beneficiaries of the hard work that was done by generations of people before us who did not have the luxury of enjoying the same freedoms, the same rights, and the same opportunity and privilege to lead authentic and fulfilled lives, to be who we truly are, and to fulfill our full potential. So I do think that June as LGBT Pride Month in Virginia Beach is very historic, and it's very important, and I want to thank you, Mayor. I also want to invite all those members from various organizations and who are members of the LGBTQ community or allies to join us at the podium, where I'm going to invite you to say a few words about your organization, and we'll take a picture when the reading is complete. So come on up. And to save time, I'm just going to go ahead and start reading, if that's okay. Whereas the City of Virginia Beach remains committed to fostering an inclusive community that welcomes and empowers all. In an effort to, towards continued improvement of the lives of our workforce and citizens, an LGBTQ liaison has been identified in each of our public safety departments and in the City Manager's office. The liaisons examine the city's policies and services through an LGBTQ lens and provide a friendly ear to constituents or staff wishing to bring LGBTQ-related issues to the attention of city government, which has led to the City of Virginia Beach receiving a better-than-perfect score on the Human Rights Campaign's Municipal Equality Index now for multiple years. And we're joined by many of those liaisons here this evening, and I welcome you. The city's LGBTQ community members, through tireless volunteerism and advocacy, build strong community partnerships connecting LGBTQ youth, teens, adults, and families to supportive resources that enhance the physical, mental, and social well-being of our entire community while demonstrating the capacity of the creative, social, economic, and influential force of LGBTQ community and our allies to effect positive change where we live, we work, and where we play. Whereas in the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28th, 1969, in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall Riots. During these riots and uprising, LGBTQ citizens rose up and fought against the discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas June is celebrated as LGBTQ Pride Month nationwide, and LGBTQ pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June and in other months to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall Riots. Whereas June 2024 will mark 35 years of summertime festivals now known as Pride Fest, hosted by Hampton Roads Pride, who will host Pride at the Beach at the oceanfront in the city of Virginia Beach on Sunday, June 23rd, 2024. And whereas the City of Virginia Beach, pardon me, whereas Virginia Beach citizens continue to celebrate unity, embrace diversity, and instill pride in our region's LGBTQ and allied communities by increasing visibility and promoting full human and civil rights of LGBTQ people. And whereas it is imperative that all people in the community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, are respected, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, neighbors, educators, and community leaders. Now therefore, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, and I concur, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Pride Month in the City of Virginia Beach. Thank you. And I do want to say we're joined by a variety of community leaders, as well as my significant other, Cole Workheiser. And I want to invite you all to say a few words, but I also want to invite you to be brief in those comments. This is our fourth proclamation, but not too brief that you have to center your remarks. I thank you all for making the time to be here, and thank you for the positive impact that you make in our community.
Go first. Go for it. Go for it.
Wait, we're going to take some pictures.
Okay. Never mind.
I hope you all will take one.
Bring everybody around.
Keep coming, keep coming, America.
Come on around to the other side, too, please.
There we go.
Don't hide in the back.
All right, everybody looking this way. No place being allowed.
All right, thanks.
I'll take you all.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Pixler, and I am the co-founder and facilitator of U LGBTQ+ Meetings here in Virginia Beach. Named U because we want the kids to know that the meetings are for you. They're for them. Come as you are, and we love you. I'm also the Executive Director of Stand Up for Kids, a nonprofit in the city that helps homeless and disconnected youth as a preventative measure to homelessness and to suicide. U was started in April 2020. We started with just a few youth, and now we have close to 50 at times. Our last meeting, I asked the youth what our meetings meant to them, and here are two of the responses that I received. "I'm a pretty shy person, and the meetings really help me with my social anxiety and making new friends. I used to live in a small town, and I always felt alone. There was not an LGBTQ community there. That perspective has really led me to cherish what the meetings bring. Everyone at the U meetings are very accepting and kind. It does not matter what you wear, what gender, sexuality, or race you are. You will always be welcome with a kind smile when you sign in." The second youth said, "The U meetings have helped me find myself and find friends. The only downside to them is that we don't meet every Wednesday. Everyone is so helpful. Ms. Nicole has helped me make friends. Ryan has helped me be more responsible. Ms. Becca brings laughter, and Mr. Mark brings the best snacks. The U meetings have helped improve my life so much. I've met so many people who have done so much to help me, and one day, I hope to give back to my community, too. These kids are exceptional, and I urge you, as part of the community, to come and see what we're doing and volunteer your time to help." There are a few thank yous that I would like to extend to Mark Stevens for helping this meeting come to life and for being an amazing mentor to not only myself, but so many. To Ryan, who was there with me from day one, taking on the middle schoolers as I tackled the high schoolers. Becca and Skye, who are always ready to jump in at any time. See in Youth Services, who comes and does a lesson monthly. Virginia Beach Police Department and their LGBT liaison, Jennifer Johansson, my ride-or-die, who has been there from day one. I would also like to thank Michael Berluci for being our special guest over the years. Heidi Evertson with the VB Sheriff's Department for their support. LGBT Life Center for advertising our meetings for us. Really, truly does take a village. Last but not least, I would like to say thank you to Mayor Bobby D., to Vice Mayor and City Council in the City of Virginia Beach and the Vibe District. We've held meetings at the Virginia Beach Sportsplex, the EMS Building, and now the Virginia Beach Library. The city has been very supportive of us in supporting a very vulnerable population, and for that, I say thank you. Let me leave you with this. Pride means many things to many people. Pride is defined by Merriam-Webster as reasonable self-esteem or confidence and satisfaction in oneself. Doesn't everyone deserve that? I urge you to love thy neighbor and always be kind. You could change the course of someone's day or even their life. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Walls, and I serve as the CEO of LGBT Life Center. Thank you for having us here tonight to celebrate Pride. Our organization has been serving this region for 35 years. I want to say happy Pride to everyone. We are looking forward to many celebrations this month, and we invite all of you to join us. But I would also like to take a moment and recognize that while we all strive to be inclusive and create community for caring during Pride, we must acknowledge that the LGBT community is faced with more vicious attacks than ever before, particularly for our transgender youth, our friends, and our families. In the last year, across this country, more than 500 anti-LGBT laws have been proposed or drafted. The constant barrage of proposed legislation and other attacks demonstrate that there are some people who are okay with the blatant inequality that we are not all treated equally. Some will say that this proposed legislation did not pass in Virginia, and those attacks are not happening here. They are wrong. There were proposed legislation in Virginia that would have been hurtful to this community if it had passed. I'm asking you to recognize that these individuals here are the ones who advocated for their rights and for those bills to not pass. Our identities should not be politicized and should not be at the whim of whoever's in the administration at that time. I hope everyone here today takes advantage of the wonderful Pride celebrations that are occurring in Virginia Beach and surrounding cities this month. Show your support for the LGBTQIA+ community by doing more than just attending an event. Make sure that you use your platform and your voice to create change for LGBTQ citizens in Virginia Beach, because making change is what shows us that you care about the citizens. I'm asking you to speak up for trans kids, to speak up for trans individuals or adults, speak up for education that teaches factual history, speak up for bodily autonomy and reproductive rights, speak up for people who are living at the intersection of queer and Black, Brown, API, and other identities. Speak up for justice and love, and speak up. Please just use your voice to speak up. Remember that all the persons who identify as LGBTQ, that that is their identity every single day of the year, not just during Pride Month. We are prideful all 12 months. We actually, we actually work harder in Pride Month than we do every other month. Jeff and I were talking about it coming up. We have 32 events that we're attending this month and working. So thank you for taking a moment to recognize us during Pride Month, because it is a lot of work for us, but we are here the other 11 months. If you'd like to learn more about what we do, please visit our organizations. Help us during Pride Month to demonstrate the love and support that this entire community deserves. Thanks.
My name is Jeff Ryder. I'm honored to serve as the President of the Board of Directors for Hampton Roads Pride. And I'll start by saying thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, for taking this time to invite us to the meeting, to issue this proclamation, and to make space and time to recognize the queer community tonight. I'm also really honored to be here with
speak up for education that teaches factual history, speak up for bodily autonomy and reproductive rights, speak up for people who are living at the intersection of queer and black, brown, API, and other identities. Speak up for justice and love, and speak up. Please just use your voice to speak up. Remember that all the persons who identify as LGBTQ, that that is their identity every single day of the year, not just during Pride Month. We are prideful all 12 months. We actually work harder in Pride Month than we do every other month. Jeff and I were talking about it coming up. We have 32 events that we're attending this month and working. So, thank you for taking a moment to recognize us during Pride Month, because it is a lot of work for us, but we are here the other 11 months. If you'd like to learn more about what we do, please visit our organizations. Help us during Pride Month to demonstrate the love and support that this entire community deserves. Thanks.
My name is Jeff Ryder. I'm honored to serve as the president of the Board of Directors for Hampton Roads Pride. And I'll start by saying thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, for taking this time to invite us to the meeting, to issue this proclamation, and to make space and time to recognize the queer community tonight. I'm also really honored to be here with other organizations that work alongside us to support the queer community here in Virginia Beach, and several other members of the Board of Hampton Roads Pride, as well as past board members, including Councilman Berlucci. Everything we do at Hampton Roads Pride is a team effort, so a couple other members are going to join me here to speak briefly as well. But I just wanted to take a moment to talk about the importance both of tonight's meeting and the work that we do with Pride celebrations. Demonstrating publicly that Virginia Beach is a city that is welcoming and supportive of queer folks is important. Showing up and being present and celebrating queer identities is important. As we see, as Stacy spoke about, legislation being proposed both here and across the country that challenges our rights, in state houses, in city council meetings, in school board meetings, and other public meetings, the more that we can demonstrate inclusion and that we are a community that values everyone that makes up our great community is important. So, thank you for making the space. Thank you for supporting our events in Pride at the Beach. I hope you'll come out and join us either at that event or at our 31 other events, some number like that. I hope to see you throughout Pride Month and throughout the rest of the year as we celebrate queer identities. Thank you. And I'm going to ask Hannah and Jamar to come up and speak as well.
Hi, friends. I'm Hannah. I am a newer board member this year, and I just wanted to say a couple of words. So, today, we gather to celebrate a proclamation that is more than just a declaration. It's really a testament to the city of Virginia Beach's commitment to diversity and inclusion and to the unwavering spirit of the LGBTQ+ community. And as we stand here on the cusp of Pride Month, I really want us to reflect on the journey that's brought us here, which is a journey that's marked by courage, resilience, and enduring pursuit of equality. So, Pride Month is not just a time for parades and for Pride Fests and rainbow flags. It's a time to honor the struggles and the triumphs of those who fought for the right to love, to live, and to be recognized. It's a time to remember the riots at Stonewall, the bravery of activists like Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, and Harvey Milk, and the countless unnamed heroes who paved the way for the freedoms that we cherish today. And let us not forget that this proclamation is also a call to action. While we've made significant strides, the fight for equality is far from over in many parts of the world, even within our own borders and here in Virginia. Members of the LGBTQ community still face discrimination, violence, and injustice just for being who they are. As has already been mentioned, as of 2023-70, anti-LGBTQ+ laws have been passed in the United States, and over 650 pieces of anti-LGBTQ legislation has been proposed, and that impacts rights like healthcare access, school participation, and freedom of speech and expression. As we proclaim Pride Month in the city of Virginia Beach, let us pledge to stand as allies, to uplift the voices of the marginalized, and to work tirelessly towards a future where everyone, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, can live openly and authentically without fear. Hampton Roads Pride hopes that this proclamation will be a beacon of hope, a symbol of the city's dedication to fostering a society that celebrates diversity and champions the rights of all its citizens. We're so incredibly excited to gather in Virginia Beach for Pride at the Beach on June 23rd and further show our commitment to this fabulous community. And let us together continue to break down barriers, challenge prejudices, and build a world where love knows no bounds. Thank you.
All right. I think I'm the last one, so. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, obviously, thank you for allowing me to be here to speak. My name is Jamar Davis. I'm the vice president of Hampton Roads Pride. I'm coming here today to honestly recognize the work I have been having with the resort management team and the progress we've made with the Pride at the Beach event that's happening on June 22nd. Had about six months of planning, and so I've built a relationship with your team. So, City Manager, I just wanted to recognize the amazing work the Beach Events Team is doing in helping us make this event success. Once again, thank you, and happy pride to all.
Thank you all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and all the members of City Council. I think if I didn't come up here and do some impromptu public speaking, Councilman Berlucci would disown me. So, just a couple of words from your Public Safety Liaisons for the city. I want to tell you how incredibly important it is for the city of Virginia Beach to be leaders, not only for Pride Month, but in inclusion and diversity. On a personal level, I began my journey as a law enforcement officer in 1999 in a small police department in Pennsylvania, and I worked there for three years. And I will tell you that although it was a self-fulfilling prophecy, I was always scared to let anybody know who I truly was. I did not live a genuine life. I was not truthful, and I never felt like I could be honest with people with who I truly was. So, I was afraid that I wouldn't be backed up if I called for help on the radio, not only just as a woman, the first woman on the police department, but also as a lesbian in this profession. I can say that in 2001, Captain now, Harry McBryan, actually recruited me. So, I loved seeing him up here getting his proclamation. But he recruited me to come down to Virginia Beach, and I will tell you that one of the things that drove me to come to Virginia Beach was the fact that, at that time, the city of Virginia Beach had sexual orientation and its anti-discrimination policy. And I saw that nowhere else in any of the other organizations or any of the other agencies that I was looking at. So, it was vital for me to know that I could come down to Virginia Beach and be my genuine self, be truthful. And the fact that I could live my life in honesty and openness was really the reason why I'm standing before you today as a captain with the police department, because it allowed me to be successful. It also allowed me to find the love of my life, my wife, who apparently ran away and sat back down in her seat. She is also a captain with the city of Virginia Beach Police Department. So, I tell you this, I say all of this to tell you this. It's incredibly important for you to continue to be leaders, not only with Pride, but in Hampton Roads as a whole. You show that it is a place of inclusion, and it's a place where you can come and live and work and visit and be welcomed and feel safe when you come to our city. So, on behalf of all of the Public Safety Liaisons for the city of Virginia Beach, thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman Hutchinson, for when you were chief, you worked with me. Councilman Berlucci, Mayor Dyer. This started out with Chief Severa many, many years ago, and thank you to Chief Nudiget, who has continued this momentum, continued to support the liaison program in the city of Virginia Beach with the police department. And if you get a chance, once again, we have wrapped one of our Virginia Beach police cars in Pride colors for the month, and we will be at every event that we possibly can to represent the public safety officials for Virginia Beach. So, thank you again. Thank you for allowing us to be here, and thank you for your continued support, not only for the liaison positions, but for public safety in Virginia Beach as a whole. Thank you.
My name is Amanda Volk. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm the admin director for Stonewall Sports. I'd like to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and all assembled for inviting Stonewall Sports today. These resolutions mean so much to our community. They really do. Acknowledging us and helping us to celebrate Pride Month gives us hope for a better, safer future. Stonewall Sports is a 21-and-up LGBTQ nonprofit that provides high-fund, low-cost sports in all seven cities, while donating to other nonprofits doing the hard work in our community. We invite all people to join us at www.stonewallsportsnorfolk.org. Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope you all will not forget to take the copies of the proclamation that are on the podium.
Here, I'm gonna grab a couple for over there.
And Captain Meister, you can have them. Please take the one with the blue folder.
All right. Thank you all very much for the participation, and Mr. Berlucci, thank you much for facilitating. Okay, moving on to public hearings. Number one, acquisition for the agreement or condemnation of 17th Street Improvement, Phase 1, Pacific Avenue to Cypress Avenue, CIP Project 10001. Any speakers?
No speakers, Your Honor.
Okay, the second one is the lease of city property, Old Coast Guard Station at 24th Street and Atlantic Avenue.
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody to speak on any item prior to consent?
No, sir.
Okay, at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances and resolutions, number one is the ordinance to authorize acquisition of property and fee simple for the Parliament Drive Sidewalk Improvement, Phase 2, Project CIP 10301, and the acquisition of temporary and permanent easements, either by agreement or condemnation, Ray community improvements, and pedestrian and bicycle enhancements. Number two is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned property for up to four years at Virginia Beach Farmers Market, Building 1, Space 9, Ray Andrew Skipper and DBA Skipper Farms. Number three is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned property for up to four years at Virginia Beach Farmers Market, Building 1, excuse me, Building 3, Space 13, Ray S&amp;H Produce, Inc. Number four is the ordinance to authorize the donation of all remaining no-cursing signs to the Virginia Beach Police Foundation, requested by Mayor Dyer and Vice Mayor Wilson. Number five is a resolution to direct the city manager to undertake a request for proposals processed, Ray, recurring, procure a study providing a strengths/weakness, opportunities and threats analysis, focusing on the pros and cons of collective bargaining, requested by Mayor Dyer, with councilmembers Henley, Rouse, Wooten, Hutchinson, and Taylor voting no. Number six is a resolution to amend the transition area interfacility traffic area, Citizens Advisory Committee membership, requested by councilmembers Henley, Remick, Rouse, and Schulman. Number seven is a resolution to direct the city manager to identify sources of funding, Ray, expansion of the Parks After Dark Program to serve the Level Green Neighborhood, requested by councilmembers Hutchinson, Remick, Rouse, and Wooten, with Mr. Councilman Taylor voting no. Number eight is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into two city-owned drainage and canal easements to maintain, Ray, maintain an existing concrete driveway, and to constrain and to maintain a vinyl bulkhead with returns, and to remove and replace an existing wood dock at 1816 Duke of yours cueway and District 8. Number nine is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $297,282 from the fund balance, Ray, the sheriff's office special revenue fund, and to transfer up to $380,000 in vacancy savings within the general fund to the FY 2023-24 Sheriff's Office operating budget, Ray, increased food and medical costs. Number 10 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $111,250 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the regional fiscal agent, Wester, should be Western, Tidewater Community Services Board, to the FY 2023-24 Human Services operating budget, Ray, regional mobile crisis response programs. Number 11 is the ordinance to appropriate $184,654 from the fund balance of the Commonwealth Attorneys forfeited assets special revenue to the FY 2023-24 Commonwealth Attorneys operating budget, where the execution of records and digitalization contract.
Open a public hearing on planning.
Number one is the Military Aviation Museum, the Virginia Beach Airport LLC, for modification of conditions to a conditional use permit, Ray, expand generally operating hours and add more defining criteria for special events at 1341 Princess Anne Road, and that's in District 2. Number two is the city of Virginia Beach, Michael's Family LLC, for modification of conditional use and amended of addition and restrictions, Ray, generating of the Office of Voter Registerar and General Absentee Precinct at 500 Studio Drive and 599 Studio Drive, Suites 2A and 2H, District 3. Number three is the Milestone Manor LLC, Calvary Assembly of God, for a conditional use permit, Ray, daycare center religious use at 4925 Providence Road, and that's in District 1. Number four is the Michael Cleland for a conditional use permit, Ray, Wildlife Rehabilitation Center at 2285 London Bridge, and that is in District 5. Number five, Samantha Caro for conditional use permit, Ray, short-term rentals at 905 Pacific Avenue, Unit C, District 5. Number six is Suzanne Coligon for a conditional use permit for short-term rentals at 304 28th Street, Unit 208, and that is in District 6. Number seven is the ordinance to amend Section 103 of the City Zoning Ordinance, Ray, granting of modification by the zoning administrator. And number eight is the ordinance to amend Section 1906 of the City Zoning Ordinance, Ray, the composition of the Old Beach Design Review Committee. Move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment?
Vice Mayor Wilson, for number seven, I had mentioned an abstention, not a no.
Didn't I say that? I thought I said that, but...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Did you want to explain your abstention?
I'm abstaining from that issue for lack of data and for not being able to address it as a citywide level. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, votes open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, we approve this consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting the nay votes and the abstention.
Okay, at this point, any appointments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under the Act of Transportation Advisory Committee to reappoint Walter Kemp and Councilmember Rouse, the Advertising Advisory Committee to appoint Deepak Nanani, the Arts and Humanities Commission reappoint Michael Cloud Butler and Ogilthorres Baker, and to appoint Hunter Thomas, the Bayfront Advisory Commission reappoint Joseph Rover, Rovey, Charles Guthrie, Aubrey Moore, and Amanda Wong, and appoint the following student members, Riley Brown and Reese Longwater, and Ashlyn Ricks. The Clean Community Commission to reappoint Bryson Dildy and to appoint Alexis Williams. The Community Services Board appoint Debbie Wool. The Eastern Regional Industrial Facility Authority to appoint Councilmember Remick as the elected member, Amanda Jarrett as a member. Councilmember Schulman is an alternate elected member, and Charles Rigney is an alternate member. The Health Service Advisory Board to appoint Linda Burnett and Matthew Prentice. The Human Rights Commission to appoint Caitlin Cagney as a student member, and Arnel Castadio. Open Space Advisory Committee to reappoint Calvin Weir. Parks and Rec Commission to appoint Ben Mezer, representing District 9, and Public Library Board appoint Robert Covington, student member. Resort Advisory Commission to appoint Lisa Danola. A lot of appointments tonight. The Social Services Advisory Board to appoint Dr. Susan Miley Petron, Whitney King, and to reappoint Helena Gourdean Thorpe, and the Transportation Area Interfacility Traffic Area Citizens Advisory Committee to reappoint Thomas Luckman, and the Virginia Beach VA 250 Committee to appoint Bobby Malati as in the education field, and that concludes our appointments.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, can you do the Councilmember Hutchinson and Ross Hammond as well?
One second, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
To appoint Councilmember Hutchinson and Ross Hammond to the city council liaisons to the BEA CH Board, and also, there's something that's not on here, is Council Lady Rouse to the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Schools CTE Committee. Now move for approval.
Okay. Second. Okay, anybody? Okay. Okay, votes open.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Remick, may I have your vote, please? Thank you, I understand, thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, at this point, any new business, any old business? Okay, we are adjourned, and we're ready for open-mic night.